Okay. It is June 23rd, 2015. This is the Town of Auburn Planning Board. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:00. And would everybody please stand and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we have an A and R called 56 Packard Chalk Street. Okay. Does it conform?
Upon review, the A and R does conform. It shows two lots, each width 100 foot, front requirement. The inside lot has 11,000 feet, which exceeds the 10,000 square foot requirement. And the back lot is 96 and a half thousand square feet.
Okay. And?
What's the requirement?
10,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage.
It's got 11 in the front one and what, 92 in the back? What's it got in the back?
96.
96? So it's got the square footage, it's got the frontage.
And Packard Chalk Street is a publicly accepted road.
Yep, and it has town law and so whatever, you can tell.
Make a motion to accept the approval that requires endorsed.
Endorsed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to endorse the A and R. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abode.
So we've got three papers in the MyLine. This is the MyLine.
It is June 23rd, 2015. I think that's it. Two.
I guess we should have, you know, have a public on the lines.
Right, just the MyLine discussion. And what do you talk to?
Yeah. Two calls. Hold it straight up. And check too.
MyLine is yours to take. Boarding, copy of that. I don't think the board has a discussion item before the hearing, so some attendance. Get your own.
All right. We have Mr. Fosberg back again. Good evening, Mr. Fosberg.
Hello.
And? You have apparently listed the parking spaces and who they belong to.
Yeah, as best I. As best I agree. Must have.
And taken the fence off the ground?
Correct, as you have suggested. And I gave you a picture of the front of the building, which you had requested that, so you can see upon our drawing where the fence would be. It would just be off the edges of the building.
That's where I used to buy my Swedish sausage while I was growing up.
Well, it's been there for over 50 years, so a few people have been in there.
And his father, he lived on Park Road, Park Street. He had the truck in there.
That was my grandfather.
What's that? Now, that 3,600 feet is all fenced in area to be used by the towing company?
Correct.
And how many cars do you figure he can put in there?
I would say probably no more than 25. Depending on how, the size of them.
Has he been, has he got a license to store the cars? Has he been to the selectmen for a license to how many cars he can store?
Uh, that, I know that he's had other lots. He had different lots in Worcester. And, you know, when I first had contact with him, it was for the author. It was for the actual building itself, and the office. Over the winter, he asked if he could put some cars in. And I said, sure, I have a parking lot. And he said, well, I have to have it, my insurance company, I need a fence. I need X number of square feet. This is the best that I can come up with. And it's the, it's probably more than I'd like to have an area fenced in, but you know what? It's, I think it's manageable. And I plan as a landlord, or I shouldn't say, my mom's the landlord. But as the manager of the property, I have, I want to make sure that things are done properly there because it's in my.
Well, there's going to be restrictions on this. In other words, we're going to put down in the actual site plan approval, we're going to put down the number of cars that can be parked there so that if the code enforcement officer goes down there, he's the one that can make the decision whether he's under or over. Is the entrance to that screened-in area going to be on the left side of the?
It's in the front.
Right here, I think, is the bits with the swings. There's a swing gate there?
Yes, and I don't know if it's going to be, it's probably going to take up half of that area. My son just put in a swing, maybe one door open. It could be two doors. So it could be a 20-foot opening so that he can get in.
It is 20 feet.
20 feet?
Yes.
That doesn't, yeah, that.
And they swing.
A sliding gate give you more space?
A sliding gate is extraordinarily costly. We already have a swing gate. It's 10 feet on each side, so it's 20 feet altogether. There's a wheel on the bottom, so it's not hanging, I'm not sure what.
Why don't you introduce yourself so we can get to know?
I'm sorry.
This is, this is Christine O'Larry. She is the tenant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And she owns, she and her, she and Mike own Lucky 13, and they are tenants of the shop.
So, anyone else finishing the same?
I said two quick questions, well, at least one quick question. First, what is the parking requirement?
For like a toll?
No, 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 for like, which is a dimensional requirement, 3,000 or something like that for a retail business, just want to make sure we meet that. I think it's 3.35, which typically would be okay, I just wanted to confirm. And?
Off the top of my head, I don't have it.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me like there's enough marking for the actual business users. My other, the question was, and I was supposed to be the easy one, but it was, how did the conservation commission get involved? Would you present Concom?
I did, and, and I'm going back tomorrow with them because there were some footages, there were, there were some measurements that they wanted further information on, and I have taken care of that for them. And I'll be doing that with them tomorrow. Yeah, yeah. It was a good meeting.
As long as Con, I guess I'd have Concom weigh in on the use, the proximity to the spillway there. But I think after recalculating this and the way you've redefined it, I'm actually okay with the amount of parking that's there for the users. And I like that you changed the configuration of fence.
A good, a good portion of the parking lot is over 100 feet to the water in the diversion canal. And that was what they were interested in.
Any other questions?
What about the, now, this, this, what he's coming before us for is a waiver of the site plan approval. Now, if we give him a waiver of the site plan approval, does this mean that there can't be any restrictions put on the number of cars that are put on the property? But I think you lose control of what you can condition and everything else in the site.
We have no authority, correct?
The board can, right?
We have no authority.
Can place points for consideration, basically, strong recommendations, but that's.
Which means nothing.
Not enforceable.
It's not enforceable yet. It's a significant site, and I think we should have site plan approval. There's two or three businesses, there's a house with a two-family, and. If we, if we could do, you know, if we could put down something with some teeth in it on that property, okay, and have it enforced, I wouldn't have a problem with the waiver, okay? But because we can't, I got a problem.
So let's, let's say, you're telling me that the waiver is, is not going to be something that you, you want me to, or you want to approve, you don't want to approve the waiver. So then my next question would be, I have to apply for site, you know, site approval or fill out an application. But I'm not construct, I'm not, I'm not adding any concrete, I'm not adding any parking lot. I'm, I have my plan for the fenced-in lot, and I have my parking that you had requested. I'm unclear as to what exactly I'm constructing for a site plan.
Why does he need a site plan approval for this?
It's the, the use.
It's changed.
The use required.
It changed the use. It was before, in the past, you didn't have to have a site plan. And now that you're redoing it, it's as if all that stuff was just being, was being constructed on the site. There's no drainage, there's not enough. We have a lot less significant sites than this, and they require a site plan approval.
Well, I think he had site plan approval for, it has a single use. And the use has changed from one to three.
The building, it's one of three. The building, trade shop, and motor vehicle repair shop each require site plan approval on that.
Which is not inconsistent with things that we've done in the past. But I guess, my question would be, is there a hybrid solution in which we, he could sign a MOA or something like that with the town and say he's going to do these few things? Because I think US have a few requirements, I would assume, that you'd like to see inputted in this.
So the biggest thing is, is the requirements of the number of automobiles that are going to be stored in this place.
Yeah.
Packing adequate or?
Packing appears to be adequate.
Requirements are minus the inventory storage.
I do believe, based on the calculations that we had come up with, it's, it's a little short than what was required, but it does.
How much is a little short?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I could pull up the calculation.
Yeah, I could.
Well, I calculated about 3.35,000 on parking spaces. And typically, three or four is required. I don't think, and that's not including in the 25 spaces in the fenced-in area. It's just for.
It would just, yeah.
It's really tired.
It's slow and nice to do.
Yeah, that's just going to bully it. So, and that being the case, I think we're okay on the amount of parking. I think it's really, you know, I, my concern is more Concom with the other piece of it. And then it really becomes an enforcement issue.
Yeah, there's not really all the separations. And you can very quickly see how these ten spaces go in, so we could end up focused, we slide. And there's no, maybe no teeth.
Well, those, those spaces are for some vehicles that are from the back building. The back building, UCX has a number of employees who come in the morning and leave their car. And then they get in other vehicles and other trucks, and they go out and work their job. You know, sometimes, and in the evening, the trucks that the company owns are parked in those spaces. And that's, that's how that works.
What I was asking is, because the use is required, the site plan approval is required because of the use, site plan approval also gives a better stability to have a say in it. You have a better notification, which you would have if you needed that. And just seeing, if you have site plan approval, you can still waive portions of that so that you don't have, you're not requiring landscaping or, you know, but at least you have, have that ability to enforce it. And you have a parking requirement for more of that.
Well, obviously, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, if, I mean, we, obviously, we have to put a fence up. And within the fence is where the vehicles are going to be parked. And that obviously varies from day to day because they're constantly, you know, coming in and going. But within the fence, there's only going to be so many that we can put in there. And then outside of the fence, he has to have parking spots for those of us that work there. So I think, obviously, once the fence is up, the cars that are in there are going to, you know, we're not going to have any more reposessed vehicles that are outside of the lot. They're all going to be inside, and we can only fit so many in there, that can fit in there. Obviously, in accordance to where the fence, like you said, has to be, you know, with conservation and whatnot.
See, the problem with that, I, I understand what you're saying. And the problem with that, you've addressed pretty good. The problem is that you need to tell me if you filled up that fenced area and you had three more repos, you wouldn't take them.
Wouldn't take them where?
You wouldn't go repo them.
Well, we would, but we would put them in another lot. I mean, you can only fit so many in the fence.
I realize that, I, I realize that, okay, but.
You just don't believe us. That's, that's, you're, you say, you know, you've asked us to do something.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess when it comes right down to it.
It's, it's not a matter of believing, it's not a matter of believing. It was a matter of, we have no control over it. If we waive everything, we lose control. The town loses control over it. And once again, as she said, the abuddas, somebody evidently had to have complained. So the abuddas probably want input into this.
But all the abuddas were notified.
They probably repossess the car.
You know, and you asked us to, you gave us what you felt was the, you know, the right thing to do, and, and you gave us instruction. And I think I followed through with exactly the instruction that, that you gave me. And I guess it's just not enough at this point.
He absolutely does not, I mean, we don't want to cause, and I don't think any, I mean, I can't speak for the other tenants, but I can't imagine if they would. I mean, nobody wants to have him come down and have to go over different things. I mean, we don't, nobody's there to, nobody's hiding. We're not, you know, we're not there to cause problems. Somebody says, this is where, you know, the employees have been parked, and we have marked out spaces, then that's really all we can do. Another thing I suppose we can do is provide whoever enforces us with, you know, our registration number so they can come down and see that we are actually, you know, we are, and we're parked in those spaces. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with doing whatever we have to do.
No, it's, it's a, it's a control.
Oh, yeah.
So what's, what's the?
Well, we may not be opposed to what you're going to do there in any fashion. It's just under the tool and regulation that we need to have.
It's kind of difficult without a fence. We have to block things in so that, you know, we know things aren't going anywhere. We have to abide by people that, you know, we work for as well because they have to see that things are secured and whatnot. And so it's been, it's definitely been, has been trying, trying to keep making sure that everything is, you know.
Like I said, it's probably, it's not an issue with what you're doing there and what the uses are. It's an issue of what we think we need to do as we look at it further.
Correct, I understand.
What do you think you need, Ronan? I guess I'm just not clear on what else.
We don't have any, when we've got site plan approval, like she said, the neighbors get input. We may need drainage there and oil and water separators, and we need conditions. And we can't put conditions that we want to put on this if there's not a site plan. There's no method to put them on and have them abide by it.
There's no enforcement.
They're free at will to not. Johnny, that's why, that's why I asked, if there was anything that we could do with teeth, okay? And without, without going through a site plan approval. And, and there isn't, so.
And it's not that we don't want you to, you know, operate there the way you'd like to and be successful, and it's just the ability to be able to control what goes on on the site.
So what is the exact process? The, I mean, if it were a parking lot for anybody else, they would just be parked there and they wouldn't be in a fence. Is it just because there's a fence? I mean, if it were a business, anybody could come and park there and visit the business.
And it's a, it's a, it's not like.
It's not a retail operation.
Right.
But what I'm, what I'm proposing is that their cars are repossession cars. They've been, they are recovery vehicles. They come and they go, and they come and they go, and they come and they go. They don't, they don't, it's not, it's not their final resting place. This is just a temporary.
We know that, God.
Yeah.
We know that, God. The difficulty is, you know, the cars are coming and going. There has to be a set number of cars in that parking lot.
Sure.
Right? That we have control over. I mean, if you look around, we have some of these places in town that have licenses for so many cars. And if you counted the cars, you might be surprised. So those are the kinds of things that we are concerned about. Once again, we don't know if Concom is going to require some other things that a site plan would have to be, if you had to put in different kinds of drainages and so forth because of the automobiles that could be leaking in some, I mean, when we did Fuller's, he had to put in all kinds of things in there because he had cars parked on, on the town.
Right.
And that's, that's what we have to be concerned about. And if we just waive everything.
He had to have a complete site plan approval for, on that new building he bought. Complete site plan approval.
But I'm not building anything.
No.
You know, I'm.
Change in use.
Change in use.
Would it be helpful if I read the performance standards for the site plan approval? There would be the, sort of the, I guess, the enforceable criteria that we, that the board would be looking for? I don't know, that feels like a waste of time or.
Yeah.
So the board would review, would be reviewing a site plan to ensure there's no fire and explosion hazards exist, no objectionable orders shall be observed beyond property line, no noxious, toxic, corrosive fumes or gases, no residue of dust, smoke shall be detectable, no exterior lighting shall shine directly on the adjacent properties, no persistent noise shall be detectable beyond the property line, no inherent or recurrently generated vibrations shall be imperceptible, no dangerous radiation, no waste disposal any type or quantity which the state deems objectionable. Stormwater management systems shall be designed and maintained to discharge drainage from a site at the flow equal or less to the pre-development. So, snow storage areas are shown. No outside loud speakers or paging systems. Architecture demonstrates some adhesive planning in relation to the surrounding area. And that, the, it allows the least disruption in the flow of traffic on roadway, reducing the number of curb cuts, leading. Interior driveway linking even parcel is presently developed that could be developed or to come next point. So those, that's what our bylaws lay out.
Well, in addition, we really don't have an answer from Concom that was coming either. So it really is kind of a moot point, I guess, this juncture. Do you want to say the Concom has to say?
You want to postpone this until after Concom?
This is just a discussion.
Discussion.
This is a discussion.
So we call it, we must decide.
Plus Concom, you get more concentration. Plus conservation.
Well, what's your pleasure?
Continue the discussion.
All right. Continue the discussion until?
When's the next Concom?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? 7:30 tomorrow night.
All right, you want to continue until then?
Continue to next meeting.
July 4th is the next meeting.
I think in addition to that, I'd like, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I want to make a motion to deny the site plan layout flat out. I'm just, there's too many variables here.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to deny the waiver of site plan. All right, any other discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was just going to, um, quick point of discussion on that, I guess. So is it, are the issues that the board sees the potential for the storm septic system or some type of oil-water separator from this yard? I think there's a discussion of slotted fences and the maximum parking requirements. Is that one of the issues?
Site line. Site lighting, abutary view.
Abutary notification.
There is lighting. I have lighting.
Also, it's a part of the...
That conforms to the standards of the town.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussions?
There's a lot waiting to happen.
Any other discussions? Anything else, Joanna? All right, motion's on, on the floor and it's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Joanna's opposed?
All right.
Well, when you apply for site plan...
The waiver is denied.
Can I speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When you apply for site plan, you can apply for waivers too within that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Imperial Distributors is...
They're postponing this.
Postponing, all right. And we have Welcome Homes, I have it continued. Okay, requesting a special permit for earth fill under section nine point six of the Auburn zoning bylaws for earth filling at Elwood Street, rear Gibson Road, Auburn, map twelve, parcel twenty.
Yeah, through the chair, we received new plans and stormwater calculations, and we are awaiting engineers, engineering's review, comments back.
All right.
And so we discussed with the applicant today, a request for continuing the meeting until we have the comments and force benefit.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna postpone it until...
What date?
Joanna.
I thought we were gonna get that done by the end of the week.
End of the week, so we could continue to the next meeting.
Continue with the next meeting, all right?
That's fourteenth.
Yes.
Fourteenth.
Need to vote on that?
We need a, need a motion, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue...
Till the fourteenth?
The discussion till fourteenth.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next, we have David Pappas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
He's the Broder. How are you today?
Doing fine, thank you. Chris McClure is here tonight from McClure Engineering, and for the record, Lawrence Broder, Chris McClure from McClure Engineering, David Pappas is here. We've gone through, Chris is gonna go through this in a second, we've gone through peer review on this and responded to those things, and we've had a DPW review, and have, it's taken a while to respond to everything, but we have a letter, I think dated June twenty-second.
We received this letter yesterday.
Which is, which is from the Public Works to the Town Plan, we have a copy of that. Chris is gonna run through it. We also have a letter from the Board of Health. From the Health, David? It simply, by ten says, the septic system's on site, they've taken a look at the soils, it has to have a design system.
Yeah, watch the digit.
We'll let Chris have a say here for a minute, maybe we can move through this.
Okay.
Next, but...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Should I stand or is it okay to sit?
What you want, sit.
Great. Good evening, Chris McClure, McClure Engineering. Thirty-two items were outlined on review from the DPW department. We also had a review from Graves Engineering, and there was a response to that back in April that we've responded to and satisfied their review comments. Most recently, the June twenty-second letter was just referred to, thirty-two items, I guess the first, most of these were acknowledged that the revisions had been made or been adequate by the DPW. Item nineteen, provide all diameters, slopes and heights. There was a typo in our slope calculation, that's depicted on the plan, so that the actual appropriate slope was shown on the plan, but the, there was a typo on our, on the letter.
On the elevations?
On the elevations, yeah. So we'll make, we'll make the appropriate revision, it was on the call-out detail. And item twenty-four, we provide labels for streetlights, street lighting added to the plans. We had indicated five locations for streetlights and DPW has recommended three lights be provided, so that'll be a minor revision to our plan as well.
We'll defer that to the planning board as well.
What?
We'll defer that to the planning board, you know, that was just a recommendation for the three streetlights.
Five streetlights?
Versus the five.
You recommended three instead of the five?
It's a small subdivision, so just having the streetlight at the end of the cul-de-sac is reading and then have the bend.
In the middle, the bend.
And down on item number thirty-two, it was just note summaries for the stormwater calculations, and they were not provided in the packet and they will be provided for the DPW review. And there was additional comments. Item number thirty-three, which talks about the hydrology summary for the recharge volume analysis, for the design changes in infiltration basin, those will also be provided to the DPW. So from our design perspective, there are pretty minor comments.
Can that be done, have some?
We just got the letter, they be done as soon as...
It's not done yet?
And here it is, but not on paper quite yet. Twenty-three sheets that need updated.
All right. So, so the highway, so the town engineers are recommending three, three lights instead of five. Were there any other things that they were concerned about that they haven't addressed?
There were some calculations that, that...
You haven't seen that? Those calculations you will see as soon as they resubmit it? What's everybody think about the three lights instead of five?
You have a, I have the subdivision addicted up here in the boards, so the areas that the DPW recommends is one at the end, obviously, neither of the subdivision, one at this, right at the curve.
What's the square footage of the wetland crossings?
The square footage is, I don't have them, and we are meeting with the Conservation Commission tomorrow night. I could pull my files.
Conservation, I imagine, is gonna ask it.
Sixty-nine.
It's less than five thousand.
Less than five thousand? That would be the only concern. What are we looking for tonight? They haven't got your thing back yet, so they haven't been able to respond to it. And, Mr. Broder?
Well, we're looking for perhaps a conditional approval, following up with providing DPW those things that she, that has been requested and the plans modified to go to three streetlights.
Yep, okay.
Everything else has been done, where this is getting down to, you know, the administrative...
Well, why don't we get that over with, the three to five streetlights? What's your, what's your feelings about that? How long's the road?
A little longer.
The road is...
A little over the eight hundred.
Yeah, it's just over eight hundred feet, so... It is nine hundred and, roughly nine hundred and eighty, nine hundred and eighty feet.
So you have one in the cul-de-sac?
Yes, one at the end of cul-de-sac, yes.
One at the bend and one at the beginning.
Yes.
Can you see that?
Well, if the height...
I can't even see you.
The town says three.
You were all right with that, Joanna?
You were all right. They suggested...
You all, you all are right with that, Mr. Pappas? Three? Well, you know, some, some, some people don't like streetlights right in front of their house, okay, other people, so I mean, it's a toss-up, you know?
The two they're taking up there are just in front of my house.
There you go.
Okay, so what about the three instead of five? No, that's probably...
I don't either. So we're all right with three streetlights.
The other issues are providing some additional data, which is available but not included and which is provided.
Okay, will be provided to file approval.
Were there, was there waiver requests in there with this, kind of allow, since we've done this, that we're exceeding the...
Had to be for the road. We dealt with the waiver request.
So far, it's not?
Yeah, and one was the road.
Yeah, the road. Was there anything more that you had to add to this?
I just, the, the other comments that I have are, is just documentation and basically input for the hydrology calculation.
And they're doing that.
And it's been satisfied, are you satisfied with it?
They just got this.
We, we received the plans on Wednesday, and so I looked at the plans, I just haven't had a chance to, in the, the calculations.
I just wanted to know if anything else was sticking out that should be addressed.
Well, so...
And there's gonna be sidewalk, correct?
Yeah, one side.
One side.
One side.
All right, well, I entertain the motion.
Make a motion to condition approve the application, so...
Second.
A motion's been made to accept it conditionally, and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's a vote.
Thank you. Can I ask?
Sure.
Just a second. I did have some conversation with Matt Anoy about your time period for review and the subdivision generally.
Yeah.
We've extended beyond what we have per period.
Yeah.
So I'll, if I can address that to you, I don't know what kind of time you would need to extend it to get everything so buttoned up, if you will, but if it needs to be another thirty days, I can leave you with a letter to do that, or...
You should take that anyways.
Yeah, we'll take it anyway, we'll do it as quickly as possible.
When do you expect Graves' stuff?
We have Graves.
They have Graves' stuff. There's lots of Graves' stuff.
Especially since Matt's on right now, I think thirty days is prudent. You're also, we have to, the actual conditions, obviously, will be received of all the plans, the other conditions, and...
Well, I take the left, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should...
I'll give you thirty days.
Okay. Great. That's good.
If I may wrong, we did the Graves' review a while ago.
Right.
And then we had another review.
After that.
Responded.
Okay, the plans and state of the money?
Okay, so if I, let's do thirty, the meeting, which is thirty days out from here approximately, whatever.
Well, the next, we have a meeting July fourteenth, and then the twenty-eighth. So why don't you bring in, so that it's a little beyond up to the twenty-eighth and nine, so if we gotta extend again, it looks already there.
Yep. If it's ready before that, come in on the fourteenth, if it's ready before that.
Just call Matt or whatever. We'll, we'll work with you.
Thank you very much. And nice to see you gentlemen again.
Thank you. Claire, I just gave you one.
I have it, I have it in hand.
Sign it as well, just, Matt not here, I wanna cover all my bases.
You're concerned about that?
Yeah.
He's, he's not concerned about anybody right now, I don't know if he has anyone?
I hope he's not.
In a robot.
I'm sure he's watching on...
Is he?
On TV.
Yeah, yeah.
And as we move right along.
Thank you guys.
Thanks very much.
Do you like the commute?
Okay.
This one's better.
All right, next one we have is JW Land Development LLC for definitive subdivision plan known as Windmill Estate for a twelve-watt subdivision at fifty to ninety-five Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass, map sixty-seven, lot twenty. We go. And we have that here someplace in the pile.
One way to the last.
There you go.
And we received an engineering comment letter today.
From Joanna or to Joanna?
From Joanna, that's fine.
Is this from you, Joanna? I usually don't take these things after Thursday, the week before, seeing you did.
Like, again, I got the...
Oh, here you go, she's getting all rattled.
Everybody's been pushing us out as we could.
No, we were having difficulty with it, Joanna, that's why we do that, we're getting stuff dropped on the table for approval fifteen minutes before the meeting.
We're supposed to understand it.
Yeah. All right, so we are doing what here? Comments, these are comments, definitive subdivision plan, you've, have you seen this?
Yeah, I'm...
Ken has. I haven't even seen it.
This afternoon, and I'm very thankful that...
Oh, you got it this afternoon, okay.
Kinda keep this on track and moving.
All right, okay.
So most of the, most of the comments, I think you saw, you had my response to the, to the initial comments in your package, and then this is just mostly Joanna acknowledging that what I answered and what I corrected met with their, their approval. There's a couple that had some questions that I think we can have some further discussion about.
Okay.
One was number eleven, which is kinda acknowledging that we don't have an infiltration basin anymore, and where what we're planning to do is take the roof water from the houses, which we've done in some other ones, and put that into the ground. And Joanna is saying that she would like to have us give some consideration to also putting in a rain garden somewhere, so that there's something other than just the houses, even though I have, I have put enough recharge basins for the roof water to compensate for what we need, and I guess the other part of the discussion I would, I would have with you later on, is that what I did was even though we can't call this an infiltration basin because of high groundwater, and we can't call this one an infiltration because we don't have that clearance to groundwater during the high time of the year, I did still leave the volumes there. So the water will, the entire, in fact, more, almost one and a half to two times the amount of infiltration we have to show, will actually collect in these basins, and during, you know, in August, it's gonna work fine as infiltration, in April, not so much. But I think it's still a useful infiltration technique for the whole subdivision, and we're gonna have to obviously discuss that more with the Conservation Commission than we are with you. So that's still, has to go through the process, but that's just, that's one open item, and I think the other one was the opening, one of the openings was commented on, we have a thirty-six inch slot, which has no traffic on it, but we can put in two eighteen-inch slots, as you suggest.
Which comment is that?
The thirteen.
Yeah, I'm just saying that since the or, the...
Yeah, it's a big opening.
The control structure is four feet and you're putting that three foot hole in it.
It's only twenty, it only works out to about twenty percent as you go around the curve, because of like fifteen feet of circumference, that's all. So it's not, it's not, actually, it's not, I worked it out, and it's not really too much more than a twenty-four inch pipe coming through, but I agree, you know, two eighteen-inch, not a problem.
I mean, I figured it was a simple design change, but...
Yeah, I, I ran the hydro, after you said... Yeah, I, I ran the, after you sent me this, I ran the hydrology, it comes out the same. So, which is double, two eighteen, so you can do that easily. The other comments are all acknowledged until we get down to number eighteen, which talks about not taking into account the, the lots that were in the A and R process, which was two lots over here and two lots up here. Which actually, I didn't consider those, I didn't, I didn't put them, plug them into the calculations for two reasons. One, we did have a hydraulic, you know, a hydrology report for those filings. And we did take the roof water from them, put them into the ground and we had some other little areas that we dealt with a little bit of stormwater issues. And number two, they don't really come into any of our devices or into our drainage flows. So I actually considered using them as background because it would actually help us out. Because they're already approved and increases the flows to some of our analysis points. But it doesn't actually impact, you know, it's not impacting any of the design.
It just, it's like, it would help to document the capacity on the culvert underneath. I mean, obviously, it's two fifteen.
Well, this does, I can give you separate calculations to have. I took a look at it.
Is this sewage and water up there?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, and this, I've got two fifteens here and there's like one tall here. We should be, should be fine, and I did, I did do a calculation on that.
Those, those other lots were already approved on trial.
Right, yeah.
The only thing he changed was that lot up on the end, he wants to have the access from the cul-de-sac rather than from Prospect Street because there's too much of a crossing there.
John, what kind of soil is there up there?
It's a...
Water rich?
Yeah, the hydraulic group is C, which is, you know, one up from D, which is the worst. But it's not actually really bad, it was a sandy loam and actually looked, the first time we did soil test, it looked actually pretty reasonable, gritty sand. You know, right now, this time of year, it's pretty wet.
No clay underneath?
It's not clay, it's not clay, it's...
How deep have you dug?
About...
Twelve, sixteen?
No, not sixteen, but we've got, we went down pretty deep.
We did the road, we did the road borings in the beginning, we were down ten, twelve feet.
It was all pretty consistent, there were some boulders here and there, but, I mean, it's...
So you don't think there's going to be any problem with the roof water being sucked up in that soil?
Most of the roof water, the way we have the, the lots designed, basically sort of...
Kind of runoff towards the back?
Well, these, these lots are all going to be, they're actually grading from here back to, to the road. So we have, but part of the, part of how we're trying to treat our drainage is to take the water from the, the front of the buildings and bring it all into the road so we can treat it. Okay, so that's how we're manipulating our drainage. The, the water to the back will, will go to the rear and it'll be walkouts. But if we take the roof water, essentially, most of it is going to be in a fill situation. We're going to be in fill or up above, right at existing ground level, where the roof water goes in to the ground. And like I say, it's not, it's, it's not Cape Cod sand. But it's pretty much what central masses made out of.
How high's the groundwater, what is it?
Groundwater is, well, it's fairly high right now, we found groundwater over here at three feet. The, the water was actually at five feet here, but we had signs of it up higher, like at two and a half or two feet, something like that.
It's amazing.
When we...
Talk that hill, Tom.
We, we actually found the signs, signs over here at about six feet, last year, a year ago. And through most of the roadway through here, it's mostly like five, six feet down.
And I know up on top of my street is a well, a dug well, and the water comes up into the well above ground. It's, it's such a pressure up there.
Well, this, this, this hill is known for...
For what?
Water, you know, and it, it does dry out at some pots of the year and... It's...
That's why I asked, just for my curiosity, that there wouldn't be a clay at some point down underneath? That's why it holds it all?
No, no, it was, it was consistent. I actually expected more rock in, in the soil than what we actually hit up there. It was pretty much consistent with Prospect Hill development, we developed over there.
You can see, actually, we're, we're kind of keeping the profile of the road up. Here, here's the existing ground and we're up here.
Yeah.
Through the front, front part, you know, probably the first two-thirds of the subdivision. And then we're basically skimming the ground as we get up higher.
You keep as many trees as you can, Tom?
Trying to. But it's, you know, not, it's not an easy thing, you know, to do.
Joanna, I think I...
Sorry, okay. Can you explain your side question a lot, or answer a lot? Isn't that, still quite sure I totally get the issue.
So, basically, they're, they're required to recharge, to recharge back into the ground. And what they're proposing is to have roof runoff going into infiltration chambers. And that's how they, they're proposing to, to get credit for that. My, I guess, the way that I'm looking at it is, per approving the subdivision and we don't really, we're not really looking at the design of the, the houses. So the house lot, the houses could be smaller, could be bigger. And we're not in the design phase for the house lot, so we don't know if we could even fit those chambers in there. There's been a lot of times that, as, as part of just a smaller site plan, we've asked builders to put in chambers to recharge the groundwater and part of the house worked, the elevation in another part of the house didn't work. So it's, it's kind of a, you know, as, as best as you can type of situation. Where, right now, we don't have the actual site plan. We don't know what's going to be recharged into the groundwater. What Bill and I had talked about for the, for the rain garden would be, you know, more of a rain infrastructure which everybody's kind of, you know, pushing towards and, and to just incorporate your, your subdrain along the road and, and have...
Just build off of it.
Just build off of it, just to have some of that, that water that you're collecting from, that was the, the subdrains are collecting, roof runoff or...
Foundation drains.
And you're going to have peripheral drains on the foundations, eh?
Yeah, the foundations would, would be tied into that drainage. And, and an over, an under drain from a, a rain garden, it could be too. We certainly, certainly put a rain garden in, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not sure I can make a rain garden big enough to cover all the...
Well, I can, we can definitely see that there's, you know, there's potential of, you know, more recharge in other places. But that seems like the, the best alternative, given the high groundwater at the, at the infiltration or the detention basin now.
Right, yeah, I, I, we, still, the only reason we're not, originally, this was going to do all of our infiltration. The only reason we're not doing it is because when we went out and did tests there, we had groundwater at three feet. So, it was right after the heavy rain and... Yeah, so, so our detention basin can only be like, you know, six inches in the ground.
Off that.
So, so it, it just doesn't work as a, and the criteria, I'll have to say, I'll get on my notebook for a minute. Because some of, some of the criteria that they have doesn't make sense to me sometimes. I could make it a wet basin, dig it into the ground a little bit and just have it be wet. And I could probably say, gee, we got a high groundwater and type C soil, I don't, I can't recharge, I'm exempt. So I don't need to, to do it. That's, that is one of the stormwater management, like, items you can check off. We're not trying to do that, we're, we are still providing this. I, I think it still makes sense to have recharge here and it might take on the characteristics of a wet basin a little bit because we have, we have like four tenths of a foot for the, for the outlet, the water's going to have to get up to before it comes out. So I expect the basins to take on the characteristics of some wetlands, vegetation down the bottom and they're going to provide some water quality improvements and they're probably going to do some recharge. But I, I can't, under the stormwater management regulations, claim that as my recharge device.
So, to answer your question, a rain garden is basically a depression. It has plants and, and trees that are more water tolerant. So instead of having, you know, just a rock swale, it would be more, more visually appealing. And it would allow for, for more groundwater recharge. So, and given the fact that the area seems to be a little bit more in fill, there might be, you know, a chance to incorporate some of that, just to kind of show that, that, you know, like the good thing, so...
Yeah, so we do something right along.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a reason we can't do that.
Yeah.
You know, which I think we need to work on, that's all.
I think something like that should be worked out between the town engineer and the, and the builder. I, I don't have a clue about hydrology and I don't think anybody else here does either. Somebody might surprise me. But anyway, huh?
I should play an engineer on TV.
He's the rocket.
I think we do, and, and as I said, we, we, we're just on the verge of filing with Conservation Commission and they're going to want to look at it.
Yeah.
More than you folks do.
Right, yeah. Well...
We've tried to make the whole development sensitive and do as little impact as possible to the wetlands right from the get-go. The very first plan that I suggested, brought up to the planning board when we did an A and R plan, this plan hasn't varied at all. We still stuck with, through everything.
And my, my last one, that was the, the fourth entry unit. There's a stormwater, a, a oil water separator and that's proposed. And it was proposed right there off the roadway and it would just be easier to maintain if it was, if it wasn't behind the sidewalk. So that we, so that the highway department didn't have to drive over the sidewalk to, to access it with the actress. So, instead of having that, if possible, having that manhole that...
Into the road?
It just, yeah, just...
Yeah, sure.
Eliminate that manhole and then put it into the...
Yeah, I'll talk to the manufacturer, I'm not sure if they can take the three openings. But if they can, we'll put it there and then we'll eliminate the manhole. If not, we'll put it right off the manhole as close as we can, no problem.
And so what are you looking for of us tonight? You're going to have to get back with them.
Yeah, I mean, we, we...
You're going to be with ConCon?
Yeah, we, we need to deal with Conservation Commission, there's still some, I responded to some Quinn preview comments. I think we've, I think we've responded to everything, but I don't have anything back. I don't know if you, if you feel that we've responded to everything, it's fine with me.
Well, I would want to hear from them because actually, you got it this afternoon, you got it twenty minutes ago. So, we'd like you to work with her and...
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Make sure everything's straightened out and then we'd be, because everything looks pretty good to me. I don't know, the rest of you, it's, it's excellent. Looks like it's going to be a nice project.
I think so.
Okay, so, what are we going to do? Going to continue this and go after ConCon, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
We certainly don't want to close it.
No, okay, all right, so why don't I entertain a motion to continue this?
How long?
We're going into Conservation the eighth. July eighth.
So fourteen, so fourteen, all right.
Fourteen?
Make a motion to continue the hearing for JW Land Development for definitive subdivision plan until July fourteenth?
Yes.
Just a question on the logistics of that. Eighth is a Wednesday and our final deadline's Thursday. So that would give you less than twenty-four hours to respond if there were any changes.
I don't think we'll get the chance to, you know, respond that quick to the Conservation comments.
All right, you want to come back to the second meeting in July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, yeah.
July twenty.
More reasonable, Ken?
Yeah, so we give you two weeks to respond and then unless we go in and they just...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We all say no.
They tell you, perfect, so we apologize.
All right, so...
So continue the motion, JW Land Development, definitive subdivision plan continued to July twenty-eighth.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion's been made, it's seconded, it's continued to July twenty-eighth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there you go.
Okay.
And sign the thingy there, yeah?
Yes.
Are we, are we counting?
We're all right for tonight?
Are we having up on the time, probably?
Yeah, this will keep us...
You're right.
Yes.
This will keep us on point, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Likewise.
Such a pleasure meeting all these times. And we are here for... Okay, we, the board, the fee schedule, everybody saw that. Recommend that we keep it five hundred dollars. And some of the other towns have fee for each waiver and up to five hundred dollars. What's the pleasure of the board on that little devil?
At our last meeting, you asked.
Right.
Asked us to look into it.
And you did.
The other towns...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, have a nice night, now. The, um... That's not something we have to vote on tonight, or we have to.
Well, as I say...
Let's continue that, tell them next week.
Well, it's just a discussion anyway. But all it is, is, is we have a five hundred dollar fee for asking for waivers. Right, and the other towns have a five hundred dollar maximum and they charge you for each waiver, twenty-five to fifty bucks. So if you had ten waivers, it's your five hundred bucks.
I like the idea of charging per waiver, it's going to be less for the...
Person, yeah.
Yeah, less for the person that do it.
I think what drove or what brought this up was that there was a discussion if we are going to charge five hundred per waiver or five hundred for any amount of waivers. And so, we just wanted to show that the other towns aren't charging more than five hundred. So five hundred per waiver, the board might want to consider.
Who bought that?
You could say five hundred max, but a hundred dollars a waiver, a hundred per waiver.
That's what I would, yeah, that, that's what I would recommend. I hate to see that big number right up front, Dan.
Do we have to have a public hearing or anything to have to change that? Or is that, we just do that?
Well, it is.
I mean, this is, I guess, public meeting, but...
It must go back to the board's, if we really approve one of general law, general violation.
They're going to make this, I know, they're going to, they're going to make the decision.
So the board votes to make a recommendation to the board, so...
Okay. How like, how is it?
I would, I would put down, though, that, that the training board made a recommendation for a hundred dollars per waiver, maximum five hundred. I mean, otherwise, they're just going to take it and run with it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you're paying five hundred dollars, whether you do one or five, well, then you're always just submitting five, so...
But that max of five hundred, that, that, that should be in there, you know? All right, what else?
It was a hundred bucks a waiver plus the maximum of five hundred.
Through the chair. I think as we're refining our process for submissions, we received so far what we've been requiring for submission, like, tonight when their, our hearing's going to be continued, they're submitting new plans and, and new stormwater calculations. And that's been our requirement. We're considering now full submission for, to continue the hearing. But we're running up against Joanna's ability, if, if we receive the plans Wednesday, she can't turn around and review it a day.
No.
Well, you're going to make a clip, we have to get that.
Right, that's not going to happen.
In our application standards, that you must submit two weeks prior minimum, or something like that, or three weeks.
That's what, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up.
Because if she had three of them to do and got them even a week ahead of time, she might not be doing it because that's not the only thing she's going to do.
Yeah, she did receive Gibson Road as well, she said, I just...
Have they had a peer review?
But the other thing...
There's never been a peer review on that.
On Gibson?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the plans tonight, they've changed substantially.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, if nothing else, I think we should just prepare the, the...
We're going to require a peer review.
I, I would think so.
Absolutely.
I, I agree with you. There's just so much for us to consult there.
It's changed sixteen times since you submitted it.
And like you said, none of this is an exception.
Right, I mean, every week we come in with a different...
That's what mostly, that's about...
Engineering, the hill, and, you know...
I was surprised to hear you say that.
He's probably liked it.
Latest thing, latest in slight spread. I'm going to shut me a camera off.
Well, the other thing that I would entertain is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.